Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, the 23rd day of April in the year 2025. My name is Marquis Harris Dawson. I serve as Chair of this committee. Public comment for today's meeting will be taken in person in this John Farrow Council Chambers. All right, what items? Councilmember Price, of course.
Mr. President, thank you. Out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to recuse myself from item 51 because it's unclear who is working on the project.
All right.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, members, that I think this is something that I hope we can vote no on. I don't think it's appropriate for us to ease our power over to the Department of Public Works. My understanding is that this motion was created because we didn't want to hear individuals that come to public comment and talk about whether they agree or disagree which artist or creative person deserves to be on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. So I just want to mention that I don't think that's an appropriate excuse, so to speak, to ease our right to approve and disapprove these. So I will be voting no, and hopefully some of you will reconsider.
All right, any other comments on this item? All right, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate to vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. President, for the record...
I think council member wanted to be recorded as a no vote.
For the record, that would be 11 ayes, one no. By Councilmember Padilla, the ordinance will be held over to Tuesday, April 29th, for second consideration.
All right, what's next?
I'd like to call Mr. Adams to the table. Good morning, Mr. Adams. Can you speak your name and your position into the record, please?
I'm Mark Adams. I'm the Government Affairs Director for Los Angeles World Airports.
Thank you for joining us today. I just wanted to ask a couple questions about this lease. Obviously, Customs and Border Protection has been utilizing this space for some time. Can you confirm what operations occur in this facility? Is it international cargo screening, or what is it?
This is office space and some training rooms, basically, for the Customs and Border Facility Customs and Border Protection staff based at LAX, who are primarily engaged with the cargo operations at LAX. There are some CBP operations related to customer-facing facilities such as customer-facing operations such as global entry. If you apply for a global entry card or something like that, you will go to this office to get your, you know, fingerprints and such taken for the global entry card. But it's all CBP offices and, like I said, a few training rooms.
So in addition to international cargo screening, there are some screenings conducted of individuals by the Customs and Border Protections at this facility?
Well, it would just be, as far as I know, it would just be people who, you know, US citizens who applied for a global entry card and are finalizing their application process there.
So obviously, CBP and ICE both fall under the Department of Homeland Security. So I want to be crystal clear before approving this lease that this space will not be allowed to execute or support any detainment or other ICE activities. Can you confirm that?
Yes, ICE does not have any offices in this space, and there are no detention facilities in this space.
But can CBP subcontract or bar, like allow other federal departments to use that space for a purpose other than what has been identified and stated on the record today?
No.
Excellent. And if they're, if they go astray, is there, how can we make sure that none of this happens under our watch in our city, which is a sanctuary city, during this federal administration who seems to do whatever they want?
Well, I think that would be, I'm not exactly familiar with the detail, every detail of the lease, but I think that would be a violation of their lease conditions because that's what, you know, they're leasing it for office space.
Okay.
And so if, if that were to happen, we would certainly follow up with them to, you know, enforce those lease provisions.
I appreciate that. And to be, the frustration I'm feeling and the passion is not directed at you. It's the global...
Understood.
The issue, but is it possible that we can amend the lease to include a provision that it would be in compliance with all city laws, especially the sanctuary city ordinance, and that it won't run contrary to it?
I'm not sure. I would have to consult with the city attorney on that.
Okay. I'm hoping we can make a friendly amendment to make sure that we can, I don't know how to do this, but report back or put, come back with the lease with an amendment to it that, with the city attorney's guidance, that this lease will also be in compliance of the sanctuary city ordinance and all city laws that are protecting immigrants. Because leases, from what I understand, can have a general and vague purposes, and if the Customs and Border Protection Agency can conduct cargo screenings and individual screenings with a vague term that's not specific, I'm afraid that'll be vague and ambiguous enough that it could be utilized for negative, negative instances which we, as a council, do not approve of. So I would hope we can add that friendly amendment. Thank you.
Is there a second to this motion?
Councilmember Hernandez, second. All right, any other speakers on this item? All right, Ms. Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, the council may now vote on item 22.
So given, given the council member's amendment, we're going to hold this and deal with it after public comment. One, it allows the public to comment on it, and two, we can get the language to mirror what the councilwoman has requested, and the councilmember Hernandez has seconded. What's next?
It is truly an honor to be representing Anne Frank LA in the commemoration of Yom HaShua. As the grandchild of Holocaust... But a personal story like Anne Frank's is what stood out to me. I was able to learn the experience Anne shared with us through her diary, and this allowed me to realize the importance of her story. Anne Frank, a girl who was around my age during the time of the Holocaust, went through so much just because she was Jewish. I could never imagine the feelings and the experiences she went through and had to go through during this time. So much was taken away not only from her, but from other targeted groups just because of who they were. The Nazi, during the time of the Nazis, they wanted to erase these people and their memory, and yet it's through, it is through this learning that we remember them. We remember them in order, in many ways, in order to acknowledge the unfairness that they faced. This is why it's important for our students, our community, but I hope we can continue. Los Angeles is a home to a community full of diversity. We learn of each other's cultures and beliefs, and we come together to show appreciation and acceptance. I sincerely hope we can continue to keep this diversity with us through unity and what our history has to teach us. Thank you.
School in Boyle Heights. My family left El Salvador and came to the United States fleeing the instability caused by the Civil War. I never thought that the country my parents left would have any connection with Jewish history. Sophie shared with me that a Salvadorian diplomat helped her grandmother get fake documents to help keep them safe during the Holocaust. That just made learning about these topics that much more meaningful. When I first did the peer training, I thought it was going to be a regular school event held for a few weeks and just be over. At LA, through their peer guide training, we were taught about the traveling exhibit and Anne Frank's life and legacy. Through the traveling exhibit and dialogue, I have been able to have conversations and create connections with people and experiences with whom I would have never imagined. I've been able to take part in the U.S. National Youth Conference that takes place in South Carolina, all which connects back to Holocaust education. The work of Anne Frank LA is extremely important because they bring Holocaust education to low-income, historically marginalized communities like mine, where placing an emphasis on Holocaust education is extremely, in the International Anne Frank Youth Conference that is held in Amsterdam, run by the Anne Frank House. This is an experience I would have never imagined I would be able to have.
I just want to note that in light of everything that's happening around the world, the rise of fascism, it is through stories from the past that we can most clearly see what we're facing today. And it's very hard to wrap your head around six million people being decimated. But perhaps counterintuitively, one young girl's story is the entry point for people. And so I would just want to thank everyone for being here today. Thank you, Councilmember Blumenfield, for, for being a part of this and allowing us to do this in a, in a different way than maybe we have in the past. Yes, Council President.
Thank you so much, councilmembers. We do have...
I just want to thank you because hearing you, hearing the students speak today, and thinking about how we can use Anne Frank's voice as a way to bring about that understanding, I think is, it really, it moved me. And I think it's true. It is true that somehow one story out of six million can be more powerful. And I want to thank you for your focus on her voice as a pathway to understanding the impact of what happened during the Holocaust, but also how we can work to prevent something like that from ever happening again. So thank you all.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Nazarian. Thank you so much, Mr. Nazarian, and all the members who've spoken, and Councilmember Yarosavsky and Blumenfield, thank you for bringing this presentation in the way that you brought it. I think it's especially poignant, especially in this moment, as so many people have said. But in Los Angeles, one of the things I love about this city is we don't just learn our stories, we learn the stories of our neighbors and the struggles of our neighbors. And so that, people from the East Side and different parts of the city are learning through the compelling story of Anne Frank, which frankly, I still remember in fourth grade, learning about Anne Frank, and it made the Holocaust a different thing for me, a different visualization, and induced a different kind of empathy for the struggles that, that are inflicted upon humans by other humans and can happen at any point in history. And so thank you so much for the presentation, and I want to thank the students for coming forward and sharing your stories, and also giving us hope that when we see, you know, here in the U.S., things like books being banned, and you can't say woman or African-American in a government document, when we see stuff like that happening, it's heartening to know that, that our best and brightest know what that signals and are prepared for the struggle that may be engaged going forward. So thank you so much for your presentation.
So, good morning, councilmembers. My name is Gloria Gamin. I'm with United Parents and Students. I just want to thank you for passing the motion in support of WeFun, a guaranteed basic income program for workers impacted by the recent wildfires. Now, we urge you to ensure that this program is fully funded so it can truly reach the housekeepers, gardeners, street vendors, and other informal and service workers who lost their livelihoods, lively livelihoods. These workers will easily recover from the sudden loss of income, and this is a critical opportunity to support them while they get back on their feet. So thank you so much, councilmembers.
General public comment.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Evelyn Brinson, and I proudly stand before you as a social equity cannabis retailer at The Green Paradise located in Los Angeles, Council District City 10, Heather Hutt's District. I'm here today not just as a business owner, I'm here as a survivor of a system that had made a promise yet failed to uphold it. Many of you who helped write these policies have remained silent. Council President Marquise Harris Dawson, Herb Wesson, Andrew Westhall, who currently serves as Heather Hutt's current deputy, and many others who are in this room today. The promise was one of opportunity of equity, righting the historical wrongs inflicted by the communities like mine. I urge this council to take real corrective action, adopt the cannabis equity reform and market stabilization motion, disband the DCR, move the social equity program to the Department of Economic Development where it belongs, and extend the program to 2031 to align with SB 51. I yield my time.
Good morning. My name is Whitney Beatty, and I'm a social equity cannabis retailer and owner of Josephine and Billy's in South Los Angeles. We are being taxed into extinction while unlicensed shops flourish. We're being penalized for being compliant, published, I mean punished for being visible and left out of every real opportunity. This is not support, it's sabotage. Lowering cannabis taxes isn't a handout, it's a smart financial strategy. Cities like Oakland and San Francisco have already taken this step, and guess what? It worked. More operators stayed open, more jobs were protected, and more revenue came in. It's asinine that in Los Angeles, the largest legal market in the world, we have not done the same. If we cannot get equity right, what hope is there for the rest of the country? You have a chance to do the right thing, adopt the cannabis equity reform and market stabilization motion? Give us a chance not just to survive, but to succeed.
Good morning, Speaker. What is the name you sign up under? Absolutely, city attorney, the name is...
Hold on. Speaker, not your time yet. We haven't started your time. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Okay? So I'll let you stand up, and then we will start your time.
The name I sign up under is Kendra Sanderland. Thank you very much. Start with item number 31. Item number 32.
Sorry, can we pause this time? Your time's held, don't worry. Mr. Herman, I noticed not only during this public speaker, but also during the presentations, you are clapping and disrupting this meeting. So I, I know that you're familiar with this gentleman at the podium. I have never once seen him interrupt your public comment, so I'm going to ask that you please do not interrupt his public comment. This is your first and only formal warning. Thank you. Go ahead. Last warning, Mr. Herman.
What about the lady who's doing it?
Okay, so I'm sorry, the woman in the center of the aisle, please do not disrupt this meeting. If you have a concern, feel free to talk to the sergeants, and we'll try to resolve it. Again, this is your first and only formal warning. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, you stopped me at 1:04. Right now, it's 57. I just want to let you know that. Item number 33. General public comment. Mr. City Attorney, I would like to know, bring your first attention that the black lady sitting behind Mr. Herman said, "I'm gonna kill you, I'm gonna kill your dog." So this is my first issue with you, I want to make sure you protect Mr. Herman. Item issue number two, yesterday you told me that I need to go back to my seats and waiting for my name to be called. I follow your order because I don't want to get arrested by our LAPD. However, after when I take a seat, and then your friend announced, there will be no more public comment, there will be no more name will be called. So I find it contradictory, your instruction told me go back to my seats and waiting for my name to be called. When I take a seat, waiting for my name, there's no more name. So I just want to make sure, Mr. City Attorney, you do not have to discriminate me just because of my three-inch size, and you only allow 24-inch-sized speaker to speak. I want to make sure, it doesn't matter if a speaker has a three-inch or 24-inch, everybody can be treated equally in the city council, and I will continue to respect your instruction. I'll always follow your order.
So before the next speaker begins, a couple points of order. Obviously, we have people who express their First Amendment rights in various ways. To the last speaker, I'll just, for people who are new here, I will remind you again, if you would like a foreign language interpreter, please let us know, and we will do our best to accommodate that, but you need to let us know. For people who don't usually attend these meetings, I will say that we try to take as many speakers as we can. Obviously, there's a balance. And so while we use a randomizer to make sure that it's fair, there's a chance that not everybody's going to have the opportunity to speak in any given meeting. There are always other opportunities at committee hearings. You can also provide written public comment at lacouncil.com if you would like. And for those of you that have the, either a digital copy or a hard copy of the agenda, that link or that URL is at the top of the agenda. So if you run out of time, or if your name is not called because it just doesn't come up under the randomizer, you are more than welcome to provide a written public comment at la council comment dot com.
Again, my name is Jan Fuguhara. I've been a resident and property owner, an individual resident, community member and stakeholder, taxpayer in Little Tokyo for the last 10 years. I would urge the council to consider the vote to approve the conversion from the merchant base to the property-based bid. I live in an independent senior resident community, and we are faced daily with incidents of violence and vandalism, and we would feel much safer, even though today I'm speaking as an individual, to have more police presence because that would guarantee and maintain our well-being and our safety. So I would appreciate the council for considering this, and I yield my time. Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Herman, before you begin, just, your time is not running. Don't worry, you'll get your full time. So for everybody who's here, I just want to flag it for you that I expect that we are going to hear some offensive things, to say the least. I hope that we don't. If you have headphones and would like to watch a video or listen to music at this time, that's fine. The Brown Act does not require you, the audience members, to listen to the public comment. So I, you know, or if you'd like to step out for the next four minutes, you are also welcome to do so. But just, we appreciate your patience with this. Mr. Herman, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
That's right, motherfucker. I didn't put my name on the card. Stop giving away my personal information, just like all of us have a right to not put the name...
So you're welcome to speak during general. You know the drill. Then speak to the item, please.
Exemption. Item number two, it's the same fucking shit, an exemption. Why? We don't need no more of that shit. Are you stupid? Mr. Attorney, look at the East Side rider bike lane, stupid. Hey, stupid. East rider bikes, we don't need bikes. We need ADA compliance to ride a bike in a safe lane. Fix the fucking sidewalk in streets. That's what the budget's about, stupid. Hey, stupid. Look at here. It says here, "The city-owned properties," just like the one down the street here on First Street at 200 West by the federal building, you need to fix a goddamn sidewalk in the street. I can't ride my motherfucking bicycle. Retard, stupid, idiot moron. That was item 50, idiot. Look at number 53 on Mommy Hut, who don't want to help the people with their cannabis measure 64. She should help them.
So item 53 is not open for public comment. So please move on to another item, on today's agenda at least. Go ahead.
Which one?
Item 53 on today's agenda is not open. Please move on to another item.
I heard you. So regarding Los Angeles housing, all these housing items, not one stupid great idea from your stupid mayor or your stupid Dawson up there who created the fire up on the hills to burn all those people's homes. Where are you gonna place them, Dawson? We got all this Los Angeles housing, and now one motherfucker here can afford to pay $3,000 to $4,000 in rent or buy a fucking luxury apartment? That's housing? Is that, did you call housing, fool? Because I don't appreciate it. My black ass want to know what you're gonna do about it, like on item 43. Homeless service in Council District CD7. You don't need it there. You need it in every fucking district. There are homeless people in every fucking district. Donald Trump, Donald Trump, do not send California any more money. They are not spending the billions of dollars on homelessness like on item number 43, Mr. Groat, you stupid attorney. Pay attention now to my non-agenda public comment.
So that's fine, but before you begin, so I'm getting complaints from the staff that when you yell into the microphone, so keep in mind, it's a microphone. We can hear you, I promise you. Please do not yell into the microphone, as there are multiple staff members who wear headphones in order to translate and monitor public comment, and it can hurt their ears. So please do not do that. Go, you have one minute for general public comment.
The Bayne Act 52.3 states that you criminals cannot make criminal threats against the public by your rules of decorum, which violate prior restraint to my free speech. This shirt represents Cohen versus California. Fuck the draft. And fuck you, California. Gavin Newsom, what are you doing about the housing crisis? What are you gonna do for the Olympics when the sidewalks and the streets are not repaired or fixed? Where's the fucking budget, news scum? If the dumb, dumb mayor's going asking you for $2 billion, yes, it's gonna offset the $1 billion, the dumb cunts, what the K U N T can't understand. There's no fucking money in Los Angeles because you fools pay it out to the slip and falls. 42 SC 1983 politely, fuck you, Groat.
That's it, you're done. We don't want to hear from you for the rest of the meeting. You have provided your public comment.
General public comment?
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
My name is Maya Daniels. Pronouns are they/them, and I'm the current policy associate with the Transatina Coalition. I'm honestly having some trouble understanding on the local level what the recommended budget is influenced by. I feel like ample data collection and community engagement needs to be prioritized in the making of the budget. It seems to me less democratic and more that what is in the recommended budget cannot easily be changed or altered after being released. It seems to me that at the local level, the budget is based more off of the perceived knowledge of the CEO and mayor's offices instead of being influenced off ample data collection and dispersal funds based off of populations and community needs. There is a population of transgender, gender nonconforming, and intersex people being attacked. There is a population of Black and Brown immigrants being attacked. Your staffers and departmental workers are also your constituents. Take a stand and support those who support you. Thank you.
Mr. Nazarian left, and here I was gonna give him some kudos. I want to thank him for working on the bike path. I agree, I'm glad you're, you know, doing that and continuing that good work. It's coming along nicely. But I also wanted to ask, in honor of my friend Amy, who is Jewish, and she can't call in and ask for this because Mr. President kind of likes to have dalliances with prior restraint and not allow people to call in.
So you're welcome to speak to this during general.
Okay, well, she would like, and we would all like, a plaque honoring, you know, the Holocaust on the bike path in that same agenda item. It's the one about the bike path on, and CD2. Sorry, I didn't mean to yell for the interpreters. Okay, we would like a plaque, because he's putting furniture in it. The furniture, can we please have a plaque that honors the Holocaust, but she also wants you to know that, you know, like he also wisely said that there's so much information out there about truth and stuff that you guys are ignoring Scientology like people are denying the Holocaust. So, okay, there's a lot of information for you to look up, but we would like a plaque.
So you've exhausted...
All right, the next, the next one is the LeMart Park. I'm wondering, and I bet Moken Scan is wondering too, we'll find out on the replay, if the whole LeMart Park thing that you need ambassadors, is that to keep us from being mugged because the parks are, have gotten really scary? Sometimes you see needles or whatever, you know, but it gets... Sometimes you see needles or whatever, you know, but it gets scary. So why is there ambassadors in the park? I mean, just curious, not, I'm not complaining. And whoever's like heckling, can you please, you know, if they're heckling, they need to stop. But, don't tell me to shut the F up. I'm, this is my time. Can you pause my time and correct them, please? I'm being told to shut the F up. All right, you stopped their time to stop him from clapping as support, but you won't stop my time for him to not to tell me to shut the F up. Is that because?
Okay, I can't hear what's going on. I'm gonna keep going to, all right, hold her time for a second. So members of the audience, again, I would ask that you, if you hear things that you disagree with, which may very well happen, that you please do not disrupt other people's public comment. And I would ask that, that goes the same for everybody else, so go ahead.
So nice that you so nicely asked them, where you threatened everybody else to get kicked out. Now I'm off topic. I mean, I can't even remember where I am. I'm shook up by being told to shut the F up. I'm not used to being talked to like that, because I don't talk to people like that, but it's whatever. So, you know, I guess with all the houses, yeah, you know what? Why don't you give them to the unhoused? They could use those houses. I see you're dumping a lot of houses. That could be used for people. And I'm glad to see that you're going to be building houses, but I'm really disgusted that you guys would allow people to tell me to shut the F up in public. You're just, you know, that's disgusting. They weren't raised right, obviously. Oh, Dunn, let's talk about the Dunn one, number 49. Yes, I would love to have you guys do that, but make it free for all the neighborhood councils to do because you're about to vote in a budget that you will probably be depriving neighborhood councils of 10,000 bucks every, each of their years, so.
General Public Comment.
General Public Comment, been waiting for this. Mr. City Attorney, you owe me an apology, and I believe Smoke and Scan will agree because we haven't seen each other in a couple weeks, and you threw me off topic when I was on topic, and you came back and said, yes, you were on topic, but you never apologized for that. Council President owes me an apology because I had the mic in my hand to talk like I do now, but you snatched, had it snatched for me before I got to speak, even though there was plenty of time. There's still another 10 minutes. So you owe me an apology, and I'm here to collect from the both of you. All right, and then, oh, and Smoke and Scan, and I also want to know, and I know, you know, I'm sorry for speaking for Smoke and Scan, but I know he wants to know this. Your stupid little randomizer, we want proof that there's a randomizer. Is there, is the randomizer somebody closing their eyes and like picking, you know, names? Or is there an actual randomizer? Can you please prove it for transparency's sake? How are you randomizing the names? Because it seems to me that the people you don't want to talk, now we have to all, what? Use fake names because we can't use our own names because your little randomizer's gonna kick us off.
We, we always-
And you know what? Shut up. You don't tell me what I need to do.
Your, your speaker, your time has expired.
We, we always appreciate hearing from you and look forward to hearing from you more in the future. I apologize if we didn't make you feel that way one day, so we'll look forward to it.
Thank you. Your turn.
Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Irene Zuccata-Simonian. I'm the owner of Bunkado Gift Shop at 340 East First Street. I'm the third-generation family member operating this business since 1947. I'm here to voice my strong support for the conversion of the Business Improvement District to a property-based system. Little Tokyo is only among two bids left in LA County that is not property-based, and for good reason. The current merchant-based system is inadequate, especially when a third of the businesses ignore the invoices they receive from the city clerk's office, and there is zero enforcement. I'm the owner of the building that houses my business, so why am I in favor of the increased assessment? It's because of the returns the community and I will receive in the form of proper security coverage, regular street cleaning, street trash, and graffiti removal, and social media promotion. I do not believe there's one person in Little Tokyo who would argue that these improvements are not positive developments and necessary for the community's health. I've heard complaints from some that there is a lack of transparency and insufficient community forums, but I have found through firsthand experience that community forums are actually the least effective way to communicate with the community. The Little Tokyo Business Association has been going to the stakeholders, not asking them to come to them, and they are explaining to affected stakeholders about the conversion. I wish we didn't have to pay any assessment. I wish that the city provided these services. But I understand the city cannot afford it, and we have to come up with our own funds, but this is the only way we can allow us to help ourselves. I ask the Honorable City Council to approve this proposal, thereby ensuring the successful future of this culturally important historic gem that is Little Tokyo. Thank you.
Ooh, good timing.
My name's Elliot Lewis. I'm the Catalyst Cannabis CEO. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Cannabis Equity Program in LA. We're here as an ally to support all the licensees in the city.
And which item is that? I'm sorry.
It's not, it's just open public comment.
So you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Yep. You know, I want to say a special thanks to Councilwoman Padilla. She did a great job of interrogating the DCR. Obviously, they need to bring a lot more information forward. My opinion's real simple, just abolish the DCR. Their answers about not being able to understand what the state really meant. Let me help you with the translation. The translation was, "Oh, we didn't know we could steal all the money and pay ourselves really high salaries and not give it to the people that it was promised to." When you have the state of California auditing you and taking your money, there's a major issue, right? And I'm here to say this real quick, and nobody here actually thinks the tax money's going to any good use at all, right? We need a hero. We need a hero bad to pass a motion and save an industry. Your own police officers are telling us not to pay because they're not gonna do anything. Why should we pay? Until we get services, Catalyst Cannabis Co. and a bunch of others coming soon are withholding our tax money from the city of LA. Equity for the people, we for the people.
General Comment. Good morning. You have one minute, go ahead.
My name is Ishman Baber, owner, operator, dispensary in the city of Los Angeles. I'm here to say to some of you in this building right now, somebody's responsible for sending tactical alert, tactical cops to our ex-Gorilla on Crenshaw Boulevard to collect tax money. This is, keep happening over and over and over. Somebody in this building right now knows this is going on, and somebody in this building can stop this now. You need to stop this. This is unfair. This is not right. You come into our stores and taking our money like we just some criminals on the street, but you allow 3,000 to 4,000 illegal dispensaries and smoke shops to sell untested marijuana to our children, to your kids, to your kids, okay? When you come to our stores, our product is tested. You guys continue doing what you're doing. We all go pay for it, not just me, but all of us in this building. You, you, and you.
So, Mr. President, I believe we've taken a little more than 30 minutes of public comment. Would you like to close public comment at this time?
Close public comment? Yeah, close public comment.
Okay, so, again, if you were unable to speak today, we would welcome you back at a future meeting. You can also provide written public comment at la council dot com. But you have one minute for the items.
Item 53 and general public comment.
So-
Two minutes, please.
Before you start, it's time. So we have closed public comment on all other items, and that includes general public comment, but you have one minute-
Can somebody make a motion to open it back up, please? You have all these people here from the community who have taken time away from their businesses, from their families. Can we please be heard for one minute each, please?
I hear you.
Somebody, make a motion.
Speaker, for right now, you have one minute for item 53.
We're dying out here, please.
That is the creation of the Little Tokyo bid item.
The councilman has abandoned us. He's left. Current, please, make a motion to open public comment, please.
Okay, so, again, you have one minute.
Unisys, please. Somebody, McOscar, please, a motion to reopen public comment.
So, hold his time. Everybody, I understand that there are a lot of people here.
Current, can we get a motion?
So, hold on, I hear, there, I believe, Mr. Cook, there's a motion from Councilwoman Padilla to reopen public comment for additional 15, 15 minutes. Second for Mr. Pre, multiple seconds, okay.
Mr. President, a vote should be taken upon this matter?
Okay.
Without objection, we'll continue public comment for 15 minutes.
So, what we're gonna do then is, because we have to exhaust public comment on the Little Tokyo bid item. Speaker, I know you're already here. I'm gonna ask, after you get, after you get done, and I'll ask you which items you want to speak to, I'm gonna ask that the staff continue to read out three names at a time that will be, again, we'll do our best, but it will be at random.
Do you want me to come back? You can exhaust the Tokyo people, and I'll come back.
No, 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 we'll do that afterwards. So, again, which items did you like to speak to? You said 53?
53, 31, 32.
And you said general, right?
And general.
So you're gonna have three minutes for the items and one minute for general.
Thank you.
Go ahead and begin with the items.
Thank you. My name is Madison Shockley. I'm a social equity entrepreneur and licensee in District 8, where I own the dispensary called The Cadre. I've been in this social equity program for seven years. Herb Wesson ushered this in as a promise for restorative justice. Marquise Harris-Dawson stood next to him. Council, uh, Current Price stood next to them.
Which item are you speaking to?
General Public Comment.
So-
Are you gonna police everyone?
Go ahead.
Are you gonna police everyone?
Hold his time.
Or do I have to sing? Do I have to sing in a language you don't understand to get my time?
Your time is paused, and we have reopened public comment. I'm gonna ask for everybody's patience.
Okay, I'm gonna give one warning. We have to conduct city business here. I'm gonna give one warning to everyone disrupting this meeting. If a second warning, if second, if I have to acknowledge you second time of disrupting this meeting, you will be asked to leave.
And to answer the question, we have to treat everybody equally here, so.
That's right, that's all we're asking for.
I have to make sure that you're doing the items first and general public comment second. So I'm not trying to take anyone's time. If you, you know, speak within those confines, we'll be good.
Public comment first.
So, I'd ask that you continue with the items first, and then you'll get your one minute of general public comment afterwards.
That's fine. Thank you for the time. I have four minutes.
You've already used three minutes, so you've got 2 minutes 27 seconds, and then the minute for general public comment after.
Please restore my time, at least three minutes.
So you've already used 30 seconds. I'm not, I'm not gonna ask again.
You're just wasting time. We've given 15 minutes to additional public comment. Proceed, proceed with the directions. You've, you spent 30 seconds talking about this.
And we paused your time. I can't give you more time without giving everybody else more time, including the people who were saying things that were offensive, to say the least. Go ahead.
This is the reason we're upset. We're being filibustered instead of listened to while our businesses burn. We're, we're going into debt. I have close to $1 million in tax debt while illegal dispensaries pay no taxes, face no enforcement. My store's been raided by the state, militarized raids. 20 SUVs pull up, 40 people armed, disarming my security, and you guys allow this to happen, and this hasn't just happened to me, it's happened to several of our equity entrepreneurs. Some people have been raided four times this month, and y'all stand silent while we suffer. We're cannabis companies. We're not federally recognized. We can't go bankrupt. So when, when we go out of business, this is-
So this is your last opportunity. Please stick to the agenda. I'm gonna move you to general public comment. Go ahead.
All right, next speaker.
What's the instruction, Mr. City Attorney?
I need you to stick to the agenda items, or you can move to general public comment, or you can talk about this.
But you didn't, you said this is equal for everybody. When he sat up here and sang songs, you did not stop him. He was not on topic.
Mr. City Attorney, we are not going to argue this anymore. We've given additional 15 minutes. You are just taking up time from everyone else that's trying to speak on the subject. So your, your public comment has been heard. We are on the next speaker.
Which items would you like to speak to?
General Public.
One minute, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Greetings, council members, esteemed colleagues. My name is Sunshine. I'm a social equity applicant. And here's the thing. Leadership is a matter of eating last and serving your people. And the Department of Cannabis Regulations seems to have made a system where they're eating first and not taking care of the people who are actually doing the frontline work and actually out there collecting the funds, so that way we could fund this entire wonderful experience of freedom of speech and democracy. Mr. Current Price has said that he's going to bring a motion. Thank you so much, sir. Really, this is a matter of super importance for us. The urgency is dire. And what we're looking is for you guys to please adopt the Cannabis Equity Reform Market Stabilization Act, move the social equity program to the Economic Department where it belongs, and to align with the SB 51. Because when the moratorium for people like Foilob Moore's to come in, they're gonna kill us. Thank you.
Thank you. Today's Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025. Employee 76266, or prior employee 76266, with the email address of chavez.dr.llc@icloud.com has not heard, seen emails, texts, calls, anything in the mail pertaining monies owed to earning it while working for the city of Los Angeles and partners. This agency works with other agencies, has transferred funds that was supposed to be kept here in the city of Los Angeles, offered people a government-issued EBT card as another psychological warfare tactic to hide that slavery still exists for the brown communities and others whose voices are still trying to be silenced for not getting their accurate pay.
One minute, go ahead.
Good morning, city council members. My name is Luis Rivera, and I'm here not only as an advocate, but a licensee who for years has faced repeated delays, unclear guidance, and an unnecessary financial strain caused by the Dysfunctional Department of Cannabis Regulation. Before the city approves any fee increases, the DCR must fix what's broken. The licensing process is overcomplicated, far too slow, and riddled with inefficiencies. The department needs to streamline its process, trim unnecessary staff, and focus on expediting licenses. Costs would drop and tax revenue would increase. The fee study that they conducted needs to be done by an independent third party and, and those of us that are in the program, like social equity license holders. I respectfully urge you in the city council to reject the proposed fee increases until an independent third party is, can, can, can conduct that, and we adopt the Cannabis Equity Market and Stabilization Act, as well as extend the social equity program to 2031 to align with the state. Thank you.
Good morning. I'll be speaking to general comment as well.
You have one minute, go ahead.
My name is Asia Allen, and I'm a social equity license holder and owner of Dope Sugar Lacinaga, a Black woman-owned LGBTQ-led dispensary in District 10. The city of Los Angeles received $22 million in state equity funding. That money was meant to support operators like myself to level the playing field while we waited months and months and months, sometimes over a year, for grants that were promised, while we're still expected to pay the 40% to 50% in taxes, while we couldn't. We also have interest and penalty fees up to 50%. When the city of Los Angeles is late delivering our grants, where's our 50% penalty? Where's our payback? Where's our retributions? I paid almost $8,000 in annual license fee. I paid almost $10,000 in environmental review and another $9,000 just to review, renew my license. Meanwhile, unlicensed shops are still going. Social equity, we're African-American. The Elisa shops, they're Armenian.
Time, your time has expired, so we're gonna have to move on to the next speaker.
Good afternoon. I own a dispensary in Los Angeles called Dope Sugar on Melrose, District 5, formerly known as 64 and Hope. I'm also a single mom, and I'm here today to shed light on the harsh reality that we are dealing with as social equity owners. The promise for social equity was supposed to be an opportunity for those harmed by the war on drugs to thrive in the legal market, do it the right way. Instead, we are being crushed under excessive taxation, denied access to fair grants and funding that were meant to support us. So we've got illegal shops that aren't subject to these high costs of doing business, and we are getting taken 40% to 50% where they're thriving and we are struggling. So they also steal from us and then sell at 100% margins as well. So we're asking, I'm asking the Government Operations Committee to adopt the Cannabis Equity Reform and Market Stabilization Motion, move the social equity program- Equity Reform and Market Stabilization Motion, move the social equity program to the Department of Economic Development where it can actually serve us.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Um, council members, I provide all, you've heard people talk about the Cannabis Equity Reform and Market Stabilization Grant, uh, motion, I ask you all to read it, I represent the Black Los Angeles Cannabis Council. We represent social equity operators, black and brown, across the city of Los Angeles. We are in a state of emergency. Hello, everyone, we are in a state of emergency, we are in a state of emergency. It is imperative, we provide public comment, I provide evidence of the DCR supplanting millions of dollars, look at your budget, they have to give back ten million dollars because they supplant funds for administrative fees and charge us licensing fees, will you look at the evidence? Will you read it? Will you take meetings with us? In any other, any other business, they would be fired by now. We're asking you to pay attention, please read and please take meetings with us, thank you.
Uh, general?
You have one minute, go ahead.
Okay, well, my name is Ronnie Melton, I'm actually a social equity applicant and operator out in Los Angeles, I'm also a CEO and founder of Sepata Cannabis Co. I am the very face of like what DCR tried to represent, I got arrested when I was eighteen when I was just smoking a joint, they put me as possession, and right now, DCR put in this program saying that they're gonna help us out, and you know, put in like, you know, give us licenses and startup programs, that is a lie, right now, I'm facing evictions, I'm facing penalties, I'm facing all this stuff because of all of the people that are working in DCR are funneling their pensions and not giving it to us, and it's really months, my, no offense, but it's bullshit, and right now, I'm startled, I'm so mad right now for my people and for me, cuz I'm struggling, I'm on the bus coming over here trying to talk to you guys, trying to plead to you that this is not working, DCR needs to stop and try to help us out instead of trying to implement new programs and try to do other stuff that doesn't reflect us.
Okay, hi, so I'm Ouija Whitmore, I work in the cannabis industry, I'm a sales rep for the brands, and I'm here asking the Government Operations Committee to adopt the Cannabis Equity Reform and Market Stabilization Motion, move the social equity program to the Department of Economic Development where it can actually serve us, extend the program to twenty thirty-one, and finally, disband the DCR. It has lost our community's trust, thank you so much.
Public comment.
Yeah, one minute, go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Rema, I'm with the African Town Coalition, yeah, our people went through the war on drugs during the eighties, where the CIA crack cocaine and drugs to our community, so the foundation of black Americans, we built this country, though, that's actually disrespectful, y'all quoting our story with people that's not from this country, though, so that's actually disrespectful, though. And I noticed that Marquise Harris Dawson don't talk about reparations, don't talk about systemic harms done to our people in this country, our people face the most hate crimes in this country, though, where's the hate crime task force of Los Angeles addressing systemic harms that done to our people in this city, though? The CEO, Alasa Lavisia, she's being federally investigated by Bill Estle, though, the federal government for misappropriating federal funds, though, and over ten people in LA homes die a day, most people in Scare Road are mostly black people that's down in Scare Road, we go all throughout Compton, South Central, Inglewood, the houses our people, though, we don't see none of these housing agencies doing it, so I'm kind of glad they got the
I'd like to call Sen...
Something you wanna say?
Oh, yes, I wanted to speak on a motion today regarding what many of you've seen over the weekend, DTLA suffered from an inconscionable act of vandalism with someone cutting down several trees in the public right of way, and for many of our DTLA residents, the public right of way is an extension of their home, their urban backyard, so the loss of these trees is personal, especially for a community that so fiercely advocates for the revitalization of their neighborhood. We know this is a random one-time occurrence, but we, the city family and community members were quick to ask, act, BSS had done some incredible work to confirm that the trees will be replaced, Urban Forestry was quick to clean it up, and as our tree count is more important as ever, and we grapple with climate change, and our city budget is too fragile of a state to allow these type of offenses to stand, that's why today I'm introducing a motion to deter similar incidents from happening in any part of our city, and so to my colleague, Councilmember Padilla, thank you for reaching out as soon as you learn about this incident and offering your support, and Councilmember Nazarian as well, and thank you to the city departments for quickly mobilizing to get solutions, and to our beautiful DTLA constituents that identify the problem, Northeast Trees, LA Conservation Corps, who's helping us come up with solutions to make sure we can replace those trees, this is exactly the co-governance looks like, and example of how holistic public safety my office seeks to achieve, stay tuned for more news regarding the replacement of the trees, thank you.